Make sure you guys add.
There's music playing, cut that. And then why don't you?
Music playing?
I don't know.
Oh, I hear it.
And have a candidate.
Okay. Hey Calvin.
Yep.
We're gonna start getting back. All six of them are here.
Yeah, just the online one. I don't know. I don't know if you want to do that.
Okay.
That was kind of what I wanted to do. I was like, I don't know.
Do you want me to say that? No, I can go up there.
I mean, I'm just gonna have to walk.
Is it back two rows?
I'll just have to walk in front of it.
Okay. Second, I'm not scared to do that. I can put my shades on while we're doing this. You read my opening statement, y'all? That's all right, uh.
Yeah, just, you can read that, it'll be fine.
Okay. I hope this works well. You want me to start? Okay. Ready? You can do ten. You can do ten questions with, with the amount of time. Just, I'll, I got it right here. Uh, yes. Is that good? Perfect. All right. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the 2020 La Grande City Council Town Hall hosted by Eastern Oregon University, uh, Town Halls, Forums, Debates Club, and EO Alive. My name is Isaac Idsko and I will be moderator for tonight. Calvin Bennett, Mayor Steve Klevitz, and former councillor John Lackey will be acting as the review committee for all of your questions. We thank all of you for attending and all of those who are tuning in online, your participation is greatly appreciated. For everyone who has submitted questions in person and online, please make sure that your questions are relevant to the city and issues that relate to city council. Thank you very much for participating in this event. Unfortunately, not all of your questions will get answered, but we only have, due to the fact that we only have time for about ten questions. Please make sure your phones are on silent for the town hall. We also ask that the crowd refrain from loud noise, outbursts, since this will only take away time from the candidates' opportunity to speak. Now, please help me welcome Justin Rock, Matt Miles, Denise Wheeler, David Moyal, Cody Vella, and Corinne Dudo. We will start tonight's town hall with opening statements. Justin, you're first, Matt, you will follow.
Thank you. Good evening. I am thrilled to be here this evening to speak about the upcoming election. I am Justin Rock and I am running for mayor of our great community. I am proud to call myself a lifelong citizen of the city of La Grande. I cannot imagine living anywhere else. This is my home, aside from the time I spent in the United States Marine Corps, uh, where I was automatically discharged. I've lived nowhere else but this amazing community. My family has been part of this community for more than fifty years, and that's why myself and my wife are raising our family here. I've owned Rock and Sons for more than twenty-five years. Uh, while serving on the city council for the last eight years, I've gained firsthand experience and knowledge, uh, and extensive experience in the area of governance, policies, and procedures over the last seventeen years. During this time, I have served for over nine years on the City Planning Commission, nine years on the City La Grande Budget, and twelve years as appointed member of the Mount Emily Recreation. As your current councillor, I've always tried to listen to the community as a whole and with that, figure out the best course of action. I take all difference perspectives into consideration before making a logical decision on laws, rules, and procedures set forth by the statutes and the city charter, bylaws, and ordinances versus personal feelings and preconceivable bias. I also strive to make, uh, conservative decisions when it comes to the budget. If elected for mayor, I will continue to listen to the voice of the citizens and strive to continue to make La Grande thrive and encourage a positive growth. I am an outgoing person. I look forward to the challenge. I graciously ask for your support and your vote at the general election on Tuesday, November eighth. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Matthew Miles. I want to thank EOU for hosting this event, as well as Brent Clapp and the EOU debate team for organizing it. I also want to thank everyone here behind me, um, for stepping forward and volunteering to help make our community its very best. Like others on this platform, um, I stepped up because I believe that I have the skills, the experience, the time, the passion to contribute to the city council, be a strong team leader, and help make a positive difference. I went to college here at EOU, back when it was EOSC. I've lived here in La Grande for twenty-two years, raised my children here, and plan to remain here for life. I'm a retired school administrator, but there's a lot more to me than just a stuffy school principal. Some background. I graduated from Baker High School, helped manage a service station for a few years, worked as mechanic, truck driver. Mixed in with all that, I married my high school sweetheart, Tony. Joined the Army National Guard, started a family, and went back to school here at EOU and got my degree. I'm uniquely qualified for this position. I have years of leadership training and experience in the military, including a combat deployment in Iraq. I have a master's degree focused on, on administration, and I've worked in a variety of leadership roles in schools, school districts, and other organizations. I'm experienced with large public budgets, and I currently serve on the Union County Budget Committee. I've presided as the chair or director of different organizations and groups, and I come prepared for those roles and those responsibilities. I work well under pressure. I'm motivated, hardworking, and I know how to work well.
Thank you, Matt. Unfortunately, we'll have to cut you off as you're too bit is rough.
Thank you.
Denise, and then David. And, uh, candidates, please speak into the microphone so our online audience can hear you.
I'm a little short. I'll just project so that nobody has to move it.
You can move it if you'd like. Yeah.
Oh, okay. That's great. Okay. My name is Denise Wheeler, and I'm running for city council, position number six. I have to tell you a little bit about myself. I am the first generation born here from my mother. My mom immigrated over from France, and one of the things that she taught me was a great love of this country. And, um, I hold this very dear. This is her booklet that she took her citizenship, that she had to learn, uh, to become a, a US citizen. And she said, "One of the greatest blessings of her whole life was becoming a, a US citizen." And, uh, she taught me to love the Constitution for what it stands. I believe in freedom of speech, freedom of religion, and also I rejoice in the opportunity that I have to say the Pledge of Allegiance here with my fellow citizens. When we moved here, uh, twenty years ago, we had two kids, uh, two in high school and one at EOU. Um, this probably was one of the best, no, I could say it was the best move we have ever made in our lives. There's something special about La Grande. Every time a family member comes and visit, they just say that there's something special, and there is. And I think a lot has to do with the citizens here. Um, when I, we came here, I started to do, uh, directing, choreography, and, um, costuming at EOU and at the high school. I've also had the opportunity to start, and the Elgin Opera House, I had that opportunity to start that program and watch it grow. Also their youth summer program, I've had that opportunity. In church, I have served in many age groups from three to a hundred and five. I've served in primary, I have served also the youth, and I have served our, um, our women in the church locally, as well as regionally, all the way from, um, Enterprise in Joseph, all the way to John Day and Halfway. So I've had a lot of experience, uh, with a lot of different people. I think I've got my thumb on the pulse of what people need. Okay? Thank you.
David Moyal, you are up next.
Thank you. Well, my name's Dave Moyal, I'm running for position six. My parents were refugees in England during the Second World War, and I immigrated to the United States when I was eleven. I didn't have the means to go to college when I graduated high school. I drove a truck and I worked as a mechanic until I was in my mid twenties. I saved money, and after getting a biology degree from UC, I got my PA education at Duke University. I had a satisfying career as a PA physician assistant in emergency medicine. I started a business providing PAs to other emergency rooms, eventually supervising twelve employees. I also spent six months at Lutheran Church sponsored clinic in Nepal. When I moved to La Grande, I worked at the VA clinic here until I retired. And since then, I created a new career for myself, doing property management. I've renovated six abandoned houses, doing most of the work myself. I provide quality housing for working families and students. I've been deeply involved in city government. I spent five years on budget committee, and I am in my second year on Parks and Rec Commission, currently serving as chair. I've also been involved in grassroots community organizing. I got people stirred up over a move to cut pool and library budgets and packed the city council meeting on the issue. The proposition was withdrawn, and instead, we had our first URA under levy. I led the movement to stop the proposed Rob Hill Quarry, twice. I've stood with the good folks of Perry in opposition to this ill-conceived and unpopular project. I live with my son, a middle schooler. I keep a fleet of old cars and motorcycles running and play music with my friends as much as I can. I river raft in the summer and ski A lakes with my son in the winter. In short, La Grande is a great place to live, and I want to do my part to keep it that way. My goals as a councillor are to address the housing situation, improve recreational opportunities for you.
Thank you, David. We'll have to move on. Thank you. Cody Vella is up next, followed by Corinne.
Thank you, and, uh, good evening to all in attendance and to anyone who is viewing this from home. My name is Cody Vella, and I am running for city council, position seven. I feel like that's low. Uh, for those of you who do not know me, I'll do my best to speak on matters, uh, on what matters, not only to me, but to the people who have given me their support this far. Uh, as a young man growing up in central Texas, I learned from many seasons of working cattle that complacency leads to negative consequences. You get too comfortable and let go of the leg, you're gonna get kicked. We have grown complacent in how the city is run. We got comfortable, we let our guard down, and we said to ourselves, "It won't happen here." And sadly for us all, in many ways, it has. Healthy growth by definition is supposed to be healthy, and what we are witnessing in our city right now is extremely unhealthy. The hardships we are experiencing are no one's fault but our own. We let our roads deteriorate by not following procedures. We let the drugs come in heavily by not voting like we should have to stop measure one-ten, which has done nothing but enable addicts and leave our first responders exhausted and incapacitated. We let go of the leg and we got kicked. What we need, who we need now in these seats are leaders in the community who can bring not only new ideas, but also common sense to the discussion. We need people who are worthy of being followed, that can set an example for the next generation of leaders, and who can encourage them to stay right here in La Grande and continue building this community into a success. I believe that I can help. I am making myself available, and I am asking all of you to hold me accountable. Thank you.
Corinne.
Hi, I'm Corinne Dudo, and I'm running for city council, position number seven. My husband and I moved here eighteen years ago to raise our children for jobs, um, and love this beautiful town. We were attracted to La Grande because it was safe, had a great pool and parks for us to enjoy, and a vibrant artistic community. I became involved in volunteering for the city because budget cuts threatened the very things that we thought made this town a great place to live. Our parks and our pool are important for healthy living, keeping kids active, and for tourism. Our library is important for learning, research, computer accessibility, and social activities for our kids. Our police and fire departments are essential for keeping our citizens safe and to be there when we call. Our infrastructure is important for providing clean water, a good sewer system and roads, sidewalks and bike lanes so our citizens can travel safely. All of these services are spokes in the wheel of our city government, and all are important for keeping La Grande a great place to live. La Grande has many needs but limited funds to support them. I do not support defunding one department to meet the needs of another department. I will be a good steward of taxpayers' money and vote for budgets that are fiscally responsible and best serve the needs of the whole community. I'm not taking any money from any person or any group to fund my campaign. I'm running to represent all citizens of La Grande and will listen and respond to citizens' requests. Let's keep La Grande a great place to live.
All right, let's move on to our first question. Matt, you will go first, and Justin, you shall follow. What have you done to prepare for the position that you are running for?
I have, uh, about a year ago, I started considering running for the, um, city council, um, or getting more involved. And, uh, I started talking to people. And, uh, the, the main thing I've done to prepare is listen. And I've listened carefully to what people had to say, and I can, um, I can kind of sum that up in five different groups, five different categories. Streets, no surprise. Last winter, snow plowing was a, a popular complaint. And, uh, three, housing. What can we do to improve housing, the, the housing situation? Business, what can we do to draw more, more people in, more businesses? And finally, unresolved homeless issues. The first question I asked, though, was, "What's going well?" And, no surprise, there's a lot of positives going on here in La Grande. So, I've listened, um, and I'm focused on public safety, looking at our, our fire department and our police, uh, our, uh, La Grande PD, and looking at what, what those needs are. Thank you.
A little taller than the rest. Can everybody hear me? Perfect. So what have I done to prepare for this? Well, seventeen years ago, I decided to run for city council, and I was new, and unfortunately, I did lose. And so what I did from that point is I joined the planning commission. I spent nine years going through meetings, learning the different rules and regulations of what we can do for our city. Uh, I also spent my time on the budget committee, you know, working through all the different issues and stuff that we see every year. You know, there's not enough funding of all the good projects that we want to do, and so we work at it to do the best we can with what we have. And then after that point, I joined the city council, and I spent the last eight years. So for me to prepare is seventeen years of spending my extra time devoted to this community and helping the citizens try to do the best I can. I know unfortunately, we don't always, uh, please everybody, but we try to do the best for the community as a whole. And so, please, that's why I think I would make a great mayor for you folks. Thank you.
David, you are up next, and Denise, you will follow.
Thank you. So how have I prepared for the position of councillor? Number one, I stay informed about issues that are facing the city, both current issues and upcoming issues, things that are coming down the pipe, things that we're gonna have to deal with. In preparation for this, and because I'm pretty enthusiastic about service, I started serving on budget committee. That would be eight years ago now. I served five terms, five cycles, on budget committee, um, and learned the nuts and bolts that face us from an economic point of view, from a budgeting point of view, from a planning point of view. It's a complicated system. It takes a while to learn how it works, but it was most educational and left me with a good grounded basis for one of the most critical aspects of being a councillor, and that's understanding the budget process. I lost my, uh, run against John Bozarth, darn. But I didn't, uh, just back down. I switched my, uh, enthusiasm from budget committee over to Parks and Rec. I served first year as a member, and on my second year, at the beginning of my second year, I got elected as chair of that commission, and that's been a really wonderful experience in a great department, under the stewardship of, uh, Stu Spence, who does a wonderful job. So I've, uh, gained experience by volunteering, by being part of city government, by talking to people and listening, and I think I'm well-prepared for a seat on city council. Thank you.
How did I prepare? Well, a couple of years ago, I, I just started to feel the need, our roads weren't being taken care of, and that's kind of what started to motivate me. Ever since then, I've always listened to, uh, the council meetings, I've always listened to all the press releases and so forth. And, um, I think the, the service that I have done in the community, and just not with the youth or with senior citizens, helping out at the senior center or at La Grande, um, Grand Ron Retirement, which I've served for several years over there. I feel very close to a lot of the needs. I've talked to a lot of the businesses in town. I've done a lot of listening, uh, as well, and, um, concerns of people around me. I, I do feel that you do not necessarily need to serve in the city on, um, on committees or so forth, to be willing to serve and to listen and to be able to open your heart to what our community needs. And now that I'm getting older, I'm gonna have more time to do that kind of thing, is to serve the city. And that is my goal at this time, is to serve the, the city to the best of my ability. And anybody who knows me, I will do whatever it takes to get the work done, 'cause I am one dedicated person. So anyway, that's what I feel that I am set for. I'm ready to give my all, one hundred and ten percent, to the citizens of La Grande.
Well, I started off serving on the Park and Recreation Commission. I did that for seven years. Um, I joined the budget committee, and I've spent about eight years on the budget committee. I was on the city council for, for four years. It is a very steep learning curve to go on the council. I, I had experience with the budget committee, experience on parks, and I still had to do a lot of research and a lot of learning. It is not something that you can just walk into very easily to understand. Um, I've taken, um, a budget, uh, a budget law, government budget law seminar to better understand how the budget works, um, legalities and things that you can't do with a budget. So I feel like I have a pretty good understanding of the role, and, and it is not an easy role, and it takes a lot of, of work and research, um, and, and reading. So, and, and in this last year, uh, I have attended the majority of the city council meetings. I'm attending, I'm paying attention to what is going on, um, and I feel like I am up to the task and, and upon what's going on in the city and what the city needs. Thanks.
Uh, I have been attempting to prepare for this position by speaking with as many people as I possibly can every single day right here in La Grande. The first thing that I ask them is, "What are we doing right?", and then I ask them, "What are we doing wrong?", and I take note of those answers. Uh, I've done my best to educate myself on the very confusing processes of local government uh, and the expectations and limitations, uh, of a city councillor. I've done my best to prepare my family, uh, most importantly, for the amount of time and energy that I am prepared to give for this position, uh, so that I can do it justice. Uh, and lastly, I've been making as many connections, uh, as I could, uh, in the last six months, I'd say, with, uh, both public figures and, and private citizens and councillors in neighboring communities, as well as in county positions.
Matt, since you answered first, would you like thirty seconds to respond?
Yes. I failed to mention teamwork. Teamwork is the core. Um, the, the people you elect need to work well as, as a team to get things done, and I'm a team leader. And I'm a team leader. I look forward to serving as your mayor.
All right, we'll move on to our next question, starting with Denise. La Grande has had an increasing homeless problem. What do you know about this issue?
That's one thing that a lot of people have kind of talked to me about. Let me see, I wrote some things down here. Okay, so we have a warming station. And I think that's, that's important because we all are, need to do our Christian duty, taking care of one another and so forth. But we need to ask the question, is having a warming station a good idea or not? I mean, because once people know that we have a warming station, a lot of times, other homeless people get bused to our area and so forth. So we kind of need to know what we want to do. There's a lot of religious organizations that can meet the needs of the homeless. For instance, in my church, I was called a Relief Society president. And a lot of times, people would come in, and we would house them, feed them, buy a bus ticket if they needed it, fix their vehicles or whatever. We might want to look into that aspect as well and, and kind of weigh it out and so forth because we are having a little bit of a problem, especially downtown, in Mac Square, around the library, businesses have been broken in too and everything. And I'm not saying I'm blaming it all on the warming station. But when they know that we have a warming station, that invites more homeless to come. So we need to think about that as a city council. What will work best at our community? There's a lot of people that are willing to help to open their homes too, and so we need to think about that. Also, when we have a warming station, they are pushed out in the daytime. Where do they go? We need to think about that. And also, there's a lot of, homeless have a lot of mental disorders, health and safety issues. There's a lot of things that we have to talk about. But yes, we do need to take care of the problem and to direct it the most humanly way that we can. And, and I think we need to reach out to the community to help. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, at this point, we don't actually have a warming station for the upcoming winter. And so it's a bit of a moot point. I'm not sure whether there's any data that actually shows that the warming station attracts homeless people. Homeless people are increasing in numbers in every municipality in Oregon, California, Washington. It's a problem that all of our cities and towns face. Some people might say that it's an insoluble problem. Law enforcement and social services are doing the best that they can to deal with this issue legally. Dealing with it in a vigilante kind of way is just not an option. You end up in court, costs you a huge amount of money, and it just doesn't work. Other municipalities have found this out to their discouragement. Other cities are, however, writing restrictive ordinance involving, for example, appropriate use of city parks. And it's my understanding the city is currently watching those efforts closely with an eye to implementing them here if they prove successful and withstand court tests. The homeless issue is definitely tied in with drugs and mental health. And if we can come up with strategies for addressing those two overwhelming problems, better strategies than we have now, that will help reduce homelessness in our city and reduce the impact of our mentally ill, drug-dependent folks on the streets in our downtown, reducing its attractiveness and reducing its utility. Thank you.
Cody, and then Corinne.
What I know about our, our homeless issue, I know that the homeless problem is the real pandemic. I also understand that those who are homeless, in many cases, are choosing to do so. But on the other hand, there are still people who do really need help. This problem has been exacerbated again by Measure 110. It is directly and severely forcing a burden on our first responders, both in law enforcement, with their hands now tied, and with our, our emergency medical workers who are responding to a massive increase in overdoses. That's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
So homelessness is not a simple problem. There is obviously the mental health issue. There's drug addition, addiction issues, and, and those are problems. Police hands are tied with Measure 110. They cannot book someone for a simple drug offense. That is a problem. We, we can't do anything about that at this point. The city has some limited opportunities to, to work on homelessness, but we also have to work within the constitutional rights of all citizens. Homeless people are citizens. They, they do have constitutional rights. I, I believe it was CHD that did a study on our local homeless population. And I think it was a high percentage, 80% or so, are local people. So they aren't coming in from other areas in general. They aren't being bused in. These are our local people who have either lost their homes or have, have chosen to, to live on the streets for various reasons. Some of the problem is lack of affordable housing. The city has done a housing study. They have a housing plan. And I really think we need to speed that through to help people find affordable housing. I'm a physical therapist. I had a patient a few years ago who had cancer. Her husband was a, a disabled vet. They could afford rent for an apartment in this town, but they couldn't afford the move-in fees. So they slept in their suburban. It was, it was tragic. They would go to Pendleton because they could get a cheaper hotel every once in a while when it was really cold. But it's tough.
Thank you. Next up is Justin, followed by Matt.
Perfect. So this is not an easy answer at all. There is no great answer, and honestly, I couldn't tell you how to fix it. But I can tell you what we are working on to fix it. One is the police is working with city, or the public parks, and they are getting stricter tent camping. And with that, where that's gonna help, hopefully, you know, kind of thin out all these tents that we have in the places we don't need. The other thing is, homeless is not always just bad people. You know, a lot of it is these people that need help. And as mayor, I will try to work on making stricter rules, which will eliminate some of these people to live in the areas, you know, parks and things like that. But the other thing is maybe working with CHD to help the people that do need the help. Because we can't just push people out in the cold. We need to try to help these people. Thank you.
So the question was, with the increasing homeless population, what do we know about the issue? I think we all know quite a bit. We know what we see. We know what we feel, when we see what we see. I want to compliment everyone behind me because that's the start of the solution. That's the start of finding a better, a better solution than what we've got. It's working together. Ideas, different perspectives, different viewpoints. You know, the, the people with the toughest challenge dealing with this are those dealing with it every day, from our public safety folks, our, our law enforcement and our fire and emergency people. Their, their back is against the wall, as it has been mentioned, ballot Measure 110, bad idea, and it's, we're paying the price. Not only do, do our public safety folks need our support and attention, the city must work proactively with our legislators and other leaders in Salem to address ballot Measure 110 and other laws that are not good for our city and not good for our citizens. We need, as has been mentioned, more mental health. Working, partnering with mental health, health folks and getting the support we need. The, lost my train of thought. The, the biggest challenge, of course, is the people themselves. Having empathy for those who are suffering and, and seeking a solution that's good for all. Thank you.
Denise, since you spoke first, would you like 30 seconds to respond?
I kind of like to ditto basically what Matt Miles said. It, it is great with all the ideas and everything that we have to come up with a solution. And that's the whole idea of a city council, to come up with solutions, present them to you, and have your feedback, and then come up with a solution.
All right, we'll move on to our first question for the public. This is from an email received from Mica. Thank you, Mica. We will start with David and then move to Denise. Strictly from a financial perspective, do you think that it is wise that the city of La Grande continue the moratorium on sale and distribution of recreational marijuana?
That's a great question. Many of you may know my history with this issue. And for me, it's, it's a strictly economic issue. It's not a moral issue. I don't believe that our local prohibition on the growth and sales of marijuana is preventing a single person in La Grande that wants to get marijuana from getting it. They can go to Sumter, they can go to Huntington, they can go to Pendleton. What I'm concerned about is the fact that we're throwing away hundreds of thousands of dollars by not allowing these businesses to exist in La Grande. I looked at towns of similar size that don't prohibit growth and sales. And believe me, the income stream is huge and growing. And we also don't get to participate in the state share of monies that will come our way from being active participants in this business. It's here, it's here to stay, and I think that we're being economically blind by not participating in it. As I said, I don't think that we're preventing a single person that wants to use pot from using it by prohibiting its growth and sale in La Grande. Thank you.
Many of you may disagree with me, but I disagree with David. I feel that recreational marijuana is not a good idea. I don't think, I mean, that's what we're having a problem with 110, the opportunity to have drugs so accessible to everyone, especially our youth and so forth. Yes, you can get revenue. But there's also, when this issue came up, I called Pendleton and I called Weezer. There's, there's cities at that time, and I was really surprised at that time, the city council did not do that. I asked them, how much is the revenue? And because that's what our city council at that time was pushing. They said that they had to hire a drug enforcement officer for that reason, and so that took up part of the budget. Also, crime went up 250% in both of those cities at that time. I do not know what they are now, but I do know that that's exactly what happened. We can't get ourselves in a situation that we have drugs at, already at anybody's touch. Yes, people are gonna get them regardless. But we, as a city, can help so we don't get that moral decay that can happen. I totally believe in recreational, I'm not recreational, medical marijuana, totally. Because there is a need for that, and I see that, just like there's needs for other medicines. But I just don't think it should be in our city. That is my personal opinion. I do know it needs to be used by certain people for certain anxieties and so forth, but I don't think it should be used by anybody for any reason.
Corinne, and then Cody.
So this is an issue that we dealt with when I was on the city council, and it's a very tough issue because it is legal in the state of Oregon. So what do we do with our city? If we allow its sale, manufacture, distribution in our city, we can tax it, and we can give the police money to help deal with the problem that's already here. But when I was on the council, a huge number of people commented on it, came to the council meetings and said, we don't want this in our community. So I listened, and I voted to say, no, we don't have this in our community. If it were something that should come up, I would suggest that we put it before the voters and see what the voters in this community, the whole community, have to say about it, and listen to them. Because it, it is a tough issue. The police are already dealing with problems. It's here. It's, it's terrible for children, but we need to do what the citizens think. Thanks.
Strictly from a financial perspective, in my opinion, even if the moratorium was reversed or removed, La Grande was late to the party on this. To get someone to dump enough money into that would be, the, the odds would be very low that it would be successful. We have a tough enough time keeping small businesses open to think about bringing in an entirely new industry. But I believe in our, in our process, and I think that if enough people are passionate enough about the subject, then they should get signatures, and they should request that it be put back on the ballot.
Matt, and then Justin.
I gotta read the question again. Strictly from a financial perspective, is it, why is it the city of La Grande continue the moratorium on the sale, distribution? Yes. I agree with the moratorium. The, it's a slippery slope. We've all heard that analogy. I have visited cities. I've, I've looked at this from the finance, a lot of people have told me, you know, consider the, the financial impact of not allowing the, the sale of recreational marijuana. So I've, I have looked. I've looked at Ontario. I've looked at, I've been to Sumter. Go to Sumter. Look at Sumter the way it was 10, 20 years ago, and go look at it now. I prefer the old version. Look at Huntington. Look at Pendleton. So we don't have to go far to see evidence of what it looks like, and then ask yourself, is it worth it? There's a trade-off for every decision, and this is one that's easy for me. I'm, I, if this came up before the city council again, I would, I would defer to, to our public safety folks, ask their opinion, listen to all sides, and then make my decision. I appreciate what Corinne had to say about the, the number of people who, who did not want this. There's a reason for that. Thank you.
So actually, the question says, strictly from financial perspective. The funny thing is, is actually, I was one of them that originally voted for the moratorium, and I still support it to this day. I think by allowing it to come in, it will put a huge burden on our police that are already strong out there. They need the help, and we don't need to. They need the help, and we don't need to put more work on their plate. In the same sense, though, citizens want to go out and get the signature and put it on the ballot, and it's passed by the citizens, 100%, I support that. But until that day, I will continue with moratorium as mayor until the citizens put it on the ballot and pass it. Thank you.
David, since you went first, would you like 30 seconds?
Sure. Denise points to an anecdotal increase in crime associated with marijuana sales and growth. But the timing of that increase is coincident with a massive increase in the use of meth and opiates. That's what's driving crime rates, not the legalization of marijuana or local sales of marijuana. It's, these hard drugs are the problem. I must interject that I agree with my fellow candidates about Prop 110 and the difficulties that causes with drug enforcement. Thank you.
All right, starting with Cody. What are your plans or areas of focus that you would focus on if elected?
I'll read that again in case y'all couldn't hear Isaac, and it gives me a second. What are your plans or areas of focus that you would focus on if elected? I want to win, so I'm going to tell you roads, because that's what we all say, because we're smart. But you have to have a good plan to do that. My plan focuses more on the maintenance of our roads. We like the idea of new shiny things, but can you take care of it? And right now, we're not taking care of what we're building and what's already been put in place here. What I've learned over the last eight months is alarming, and, you know, maybe I'm completely wrong in thinking this, but we shouldn't be dumping rock on the ground if we don't have equipment that can pick it up. And that's right from Public Works. They dump rock instead of plow in some places to make it quicker and easier to open roads back up, and then they come through and they sweep it off to the side. That is a huge disservice, disservice to the community. And if my calculations are correct, and I'm no math whiz, but I believe that there's about $75,000 worth of rock laying on our streets right now that we're all driving around on year-round. That is digging into our roads and causing deterioration that shouldn't have taken place in the first place. Obviously, we also want to focus on things like drugs and homelessness, but until we can get measure 110 repealed and reversed, and that's something that's above any of our pay grades in this room, all we can do is try to bring the community together to come up with new ideas and new plans to help decrease the crime and the struggles that we're dealing with, with the local homeless population. Thank you.
So I actually think housing is integral to lots of what's going on with the city. I think we need to work with the 2021 Housing Production Report Blueprint that the city council has established and expedite building more housing at all levels. Housing affects the economy because people can't move here if they can't find a place to live. Businesses have turned away bringing plants to this area because they found that we didn't have enough housing stock to support the workforce that they were intending to bring into town. So that would be my first priority. I think the roads are important. I think, I'm so happy that the ARPA funds, at least the majority of them, are going to go to improving our roads. I wish more of that money would have gone to that. I was on the Parking Traffic Safety Committee that built that plan to prioritize all of the roads. I disagree with Cody in the dumping of rock on the roads. The procedure is that they plow, they put some gravel on for traction, and then they do have street sweepers that go through in the spring, and it collects all of those rocks, and I see that happen. If, I'm thinking of like top priorities. And I think we just need to continue to support all of our departments, be physically responsible, make sure that we have, I mean, we always have a balanced budget. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. So one of my first things, if I do wear in mayor, is to continue underleaving urban renewal. And the reason why is with that extra money, I would like to see what we could do to help our police and fire get a little more funding. They really do need the help. And so that's one of my first things I will work on, is to see the extra funding for the police and fire department. Secondly, is communication. I think one big thing that in the last eight years that I've noticed is between the council and the mayor, the communication with the city and the citizens. My number one thing is, of course, learn my other counselors, get to know them, so that way they know me as well. And then go on out to the different parts of the city and meet the citizens and listen and see what they want us to do, and try to bring that to the best I can to help and improve things. Thank you.
I mentioned earlier that I've, that I ask people a couple of questions. One, what's going well? Two, what can we improve on? Five different areas, streets, we've heard about streets, snow removal, housing, improved business climate, attracting new business and manufacturing, and of course, the homeless. Those are my priorities, but really, it boils down to this. What's in the budget? Because the budget is the plan, and a plan is a budget. So currently, we're working with the budget that we've adopted for this fiscal year. And next year, we'll be, we'll be working together as a city council to adopt the next budget. One of the challenges that we have is the, that I want to focus on, public safety. I mentioned that before. There's a lot of challenges in that area. Our police station is shared with the sheriff's office and the jail. That's a priority. How do we address that? Our fire department needs a brush truck. How do we prioritize that? Those are, and of course, staffing needs. Mixed in with all this is what we're all dealing with, inflation. Everything costs more today than it did yesterday, and it's going to continue to rise. Who knows where it's going to go? You just heard about under levy. One of the things I'm most uncomfortable with, as I've been reviewing our budget, is the, and I'm working to understand it better. It's a recent practice by the city to use property tax under levy from the urban renewal. For the past six or seven years, the city has begun the annual practice of using urban renewal under levy and then moving those funds to the general fund and ultimately using those to fix our streets. Thank you.
Okay, everybody knows the roads, okay. But I also want to focus on snow removal. I think the standard that we have right now of six inches, it has to come at one time, is way too much. It affects our businesses, it affects our doctor's offices, people don't want to go out on those roads. And I also think when it becomes nice and slushy, let's push it away before it turns into black ice. And so I would really like to work on that. Of course, safety, law enforcement or fire department, they need more staff. You know, what can we do? And they run our ambulances as well. Also, support of local businesses. What can we do to give them incentives to stay here in LeGrand instead of moving to Island City or other places? What can we do as a city to do that? Also, I'd like to have better transparency, and what I'm talking about is basically our budgets. Every department comes up with a budget, just like what we do in our own home. I think it needs to be put online the fiscal year, and so we can see where our tax money is exactly going. I don't think we will whine and complain as much about our taxes if we see where they go. And so we can hold the city accountable and us as a council, as well as accountable, about how we spend your tax dollars.
Okay, well, areas of focus for me, number one, housing. Lack of available housing at all price points is crippling LeGrand. We can't find employees because employees can't find places to live and move here, and it's hard to keep existing workforce housed with the current shortage. Personally, I have brought six units of housing onto the rental market by rehabilitating vacant and abandoned houses. I see this as a route to improving housing stock for the city. I believe the city should inventory empty homes, contact owners, encourage reoccupancy, possibly through grants or tax forbearance where appropriate. Second area of focus for me is drugs, okay? This is an extremely complex problem. Proposition 110 has effectively removed the threat of jail time that might lever drug offenders into treatment. I support a revitalized drug task force composed of representatives of law enforcement, the judiciary, and public health and social services to come up with effective drug treatment and intervention measures, possibly looking at them through the lens of domestic violence since there's often an association between substance abuse and domestic violence. Third area of focus for me is youth programs and serving on Parks and Rec Commission. I've seen firsthand how effective that department is in providing programs for youth. Sports programs are thriving, but we lack a year-round resource for youth and adults to gather to engage in sports and special events. I support exploring a possible community center in LeGrand to serve this purpose. Thank you.
Cody, since you went first, would you like a 30-second response? All right. To our next question, we are going to start with Corinne and then move to Cody. How do you define economic development, and what are your priorities for it?
So economic development is recruitment of businesses, retention of the businesses that are here, and expansion of the businesses that are here. We have a variety of ways that we can do that. Urban renewal has been actually quite effective in helping economic development. We have an economic development director who reaches out to the businesses, and I can encourage more of that to happen. We have lots of tools to develop businesses, and we are using those tools, so I'll continue to do that. Thank you.
How do you define economic development and what are your priorities? So I think it's bringing in new businesses slowly and only as our local infrastructure can handle it. We need to encourage our entrepreneurs and have something to show them that we have tools established to help them be successful here. We're not going to get those entrepreneurs to want to start businesses in LeGrand when they can go to Island City and do it with less hoops to jump through and less crime and less risk. That would mean my priorities for this would tie back into public safety. I think it's our number one problem right now. We need more officers, we need less, we need more officers. I should just say that. Thank you.
We have a urban renewal agency that's been here in LeGrand for 23 years, works hand-in-hand with the city council. In fact, they're, it's joined at the hip. They've got goals, and they're working towards those goals. So I support those goals, recruiting more business, retaining business. We've heard about losing business. So one way to do that, remove the obstacles. Quit putting stumbling blocks up, create a freeway to success. And of course, continue to support our downtown area, those small businesses that make the downtown area vibrant, and work together to make our city its best.
You think I know a little bit about this, being a business owner. One of the big things for me is recruitment, and that's where we use the urban renewal agency, helping us bring money to bring new business in, and we've done quite well with that. We've taken, you know, vacant properties where the buildings were in shambles, and now we've turned them into, Heinz is probably one of the best ones, I come to my mind. And I mean, it's a beautiful building, it's a great business, it gives a lot back to this community. And that's where the retention is, you know, is helping out these small businesses so they can continue to grow, because of course, they are the ones paying that tax. So we want to continue to help them. You know, one of the big things, though, that always gets me, is everybody always talks about downtown. I'm a huge supporter of downtown, but in the same sense, it's our small business community. It's not just downtown, it's the whole of Grand. And there's other businesses besides what is downtown. So as mayor, I will ensure that each one of the small businesses feel welcome in our community, and I support them. Thank you.
Well, in the broader sense, economic development is the use of public dollars to promote the economic vitality and well-being of a community. Most obvious route to economic development that the city has in its arsenal is the Urban Renewal District and the Urban Renewal Agency. URA has had some notable successes. Among these is the Pennington's redevelopment of the old Renegade Building. That was a blighted property, if there ever was one. The combination of living spaces and a successful business on the ground floor is definitely a home run. And I think that that's the kind of projects that we need to focus our resources on instead of a piecemeal approach. Based on this, I think that we should be focusing on major projects. An example of this might be the idea of redeveloping the Bonham Camp Building into a mixed-use residential and business space. A third possibility for economic development would be the redevelopment of Jefferson Street. That's prime, prime, and architecturally desirable real estate that could be a retail hub, it could be an arts hub, it could be a crafts, a makers' hub, and I think that we should be looking at that as a long-term focus and recipient of economic development dollars. Thank you.
I totally agree with a lot of things that have been said, that we do need to look and see what would benefit LeGrand the best and so forth. We got to make sure that we could invite new businesses and, you know, restaurants, stores, even store changes. I know in the past, they have been turned down previously by previous councils before. I know housing is an issue. When we moved here 20 years ago, there were only two houses in LeGrand that had four bedrooms, and we needed the four bedrooms for our family. So I do know that, and that continues to be an issue. And I'm really glad the Planning Commission is really working on their goal for 2040. I also know the other issues, too, that the city sometime really doesn't, they're not in the job of providing housing, developers are. So what can we do to help our developers? So what can we do to help our developers? Give them the incentives, possibly reducing fees or permit fees and so forth. And because they also, if a new area has not been developed, they have to put sewage, electric, water, all that in there. So maybe we can work with our utilities. We've got to come up with a plan, how we can develop in a very friendly way to all of our businesses. I totally agree with Justin. It's not just our businesses downtown, but it's all of our Le Grand businesses that we need to care about, and also make it easy for them to succeed and to grow and to develop.
Corrine, since you started first, would you like 30 seconds? All right, thank you. Our next question is from an email from Susan. Thank you, Susan. First up will be Justin, and the question is, what would you do to increase activity in the downtown area?
To... So help increase downtown. Honestly, what we've been doing, we just need to continue. You know, the bad thing is with the pandemic, it wiped out a lot of small businesses. And so I think with Urban Renewal District, we can keep continuing to help bring new businesses in, but just right now, it's not as easy as everybody thinks, because the problem is, is there is just not small businesses out there that want to go. But we will be here waiting, and when they're ready, we have funds set aside to continue helping them bring them in and fill in our empty buildings. Thank you.
I'm a small business owner as well. My business is not downtown, so I appreciate what Justin mentioned in his previous answer about the need for support of all business. Increasing the hub of our... Increasing business activity in the hub of our city is a goal, it's been a goal for a while, and I would agree. Keep doing what we're doing to support that. I put emphasis on removing roadblocks. I appreciate many of the projects that have been done over the years. When we see, you know, I'll name a few. We heard about Heinz. Just imagine what that... If you saw that building before they started on that and built Heinz Meet, very impressive advancement. Antlers, Brickyard Lanes, and the list goes on. All these projects that, together, they're like puzzle pieces, and if we keep working on it and adding more pieces to it, we will see a revitalized downtown. Thank you.
Denise, and then David.
I, too, am very grateful for what Urban Renewal has done to our downtown and trying to revitalize it and also the areas around. Also, I think another thing, too, we need to give our downtown and other businesses, I guess I agree in other businesses as well, incentives to improve their businesses, to beautify them, to make them more appealing and so forth, to people to come downtown. I love the events that we have downtown. We have a new... Oh, bummer, I can't think of the word. No, that said it. I can't think. Chamber of Commerce, that's it. We have a whole new committee, and they are full of wonderful ideas, and we need to work with them. They've had experiences from other areas, from growth that they have had to develop those other cities, and I think we need to work with them. And we just need to move forward. And we also, as individuals, need to support our local businesses as well and so forth. So I think that's it.
Well, it seems pretty straightforward to me. If you want to increase activity downtown, we need to get more people downtown. Want to get more people downtown, we've got to offer more housing for people downtown. So I support mixed-use developments like Pennington's project at the old Renegade, which brings a fair number of residential units to the downtown area, increases foot traffic through downtown both day and evening and even at night. I think that the idea of developing Jefferson Street is a great idea. It's fairly long-term, but ultimately, it will draw tourists and customers to our downtown area and will benefit the entire downtown, not just Jefferson Street. And the possibilities there are just about endless. And that's about what I have to say. Thank you.
I think, under the scope of a city councillor, increasing activity in the downtown area really comes to, again, supporting small businesses and the community events that we all seem to enjoy with our kids. Most importantly, what we need to do is clean up Max Square. More and more, we're hearing people say they don't want to bring their kids downtown anymore because they're fearful of them being exposed to inappropriate behavior. This all ties, again, back to Measure 110, back to homelessness, and back to our drug problem. Thank you.
So I think we have a vibrant downtown. If you go there on Saturday, Farmer's Market Day, it's fabulous. The council can work with the Chamber of Commerce, Le Grand Main Street, to promote the different activities and festivals, and I think that that's a great opportunity. I think we could do a better job at partnering with EOU and getting all of these students that go to EOU downtown, and there's lots of ways that you can do that. I also, with David, think that there's a lot of untapped potential in the downtown area with a lot of upstairs apartments that could be developed. The Mammons have developed a few of them. There's some great potential above Mountain Works Cyclory, but there's some barriers to doing that, expensive barriers. If we can support those kind of projects and have people living downtown, they're naturally going to flow into all the small businesses. Thanks.
Justin, since you began, would you like 30?
So one thing, we do work with the Chamber. I'm the rep that actually, for the last eight years, has worked side-by-side with the Chamber of Commerce. We do have a new committee on there, and they are amazing. So once I do get, hopefully, elected mayor, I will continue working with the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, and hopefully, that will help us with the downtown. Thank you.
All right. Our next question is from a Le Grand citizen all the way in Japan, and his name is Fred. Thank you for writing to us, Fred, from Japan. And what is one issue you personally feel strong about that the majority of constituents would not agree with, and how do you proceed? Matt, you are first.
See if I can read it down there. "One issue I personally feel strongly about that the majority of constituents would not agree with, how would you proceed?" I'm not sure... I'm not sure I have a good response. There's things that I feel strongly about, and I guess I'll talk about that, and maybe some of you agree or disagree, I don't know. But public safety, I'm going to keep harping on that. That's the one string I can play, and I'm going to keep harping on that. We heard about Max Square. That's a priority for me as well. And I know perhaps not everyone agrees. There is... There's so many different ideas that I guess, here's my approach. I mentioned teamwork before. I prefer, I like to collaborate with others to get things done. So taking the best ideas, working together with all the agencies involved to focus on a solution, and then pushing that solution forward so we have a common goal, getting it done. That's my answer. Thank you.
So one of mine would be renewal. Why do I say that? Is Urban Renewal, back in, I can't remember the exact time, but in the early '90s, we came in and we put this in place. And so at that time, they put taxes on a cap. So any of that money above that is going to go into the Urban Renewal Agency. So with that money, it keeps growing each year. Tax base grows, it goes up. So one of my things is, I've always been a big pusher of underleveing the Urban Renewal, because what we're doing then is, we're taking money that just keeps growing and feeding the monster and putting it back to where it belongs. You know, working to the general fund where we could have another police officer, where we could help fund the fire department's wildland truck. With that, that's why one of my things, if I do become mayor, is I'm going to continue working on underleveing Urban Renewal, so we put money back to general budget, so we put money where it belongs. Thank you.
David is up next, actually.
Well, Justin kind of took the words out of my mouth about the under levy, so I'm going to go out on a limb here. An issue I feel strongly about that many would disagree with is psilocybin. And the reason I feel strongly about this is because I spent three years working at the VA clinic, and I saw firsthand the mental health challenges that are faced by our veterans. Suicide rate among vets, as I'm sure all of you know, is sky-high. And any treatment option that might help these deserving folks who deserve our total gratefulness and gratitude should be made available to them. Psilocybin's treatment is very, very promising for depression, for PTSD, and for suicidal ideation. So controversially, I will say that I support the provision of psilocybin in the city of Le Grand, if only to serve our veterans population. Thank you.
Okay, so the question is basically what I feel strongly about. I feel strongly about the roads and everything that all you guys are concerned about. So I think we're kind of together here. I don't think you would disagree with any of those kind of items. So I can't really think... Oh, yes, I can think of one. Okay, so I think probably some of you may disagree with me on my philosophy about recreational marijuana. I think that's probably the only thing, but otherwise, I think we totally agree in how we need to develop, we need housing, we need our public safety enforced, have law enforcement and so forth, and to grow our community. I think you're all agreeing with me, but I think some of you may not agree with me on the marijuana issue.
I wasn't sure where we were at, so, thank you. This is kind of a tough question because I think on city issues, I align with most people, but I think there are some misconceptions. One misconception is that we need to balance the budget. By law, we have to balance the budget. I've been on the budget committee for eight years, and the city budget is always balanced because it has to be balanced. So just, that would be one misconception, and another one is that we're understaffed. Finally, we are fully staffed in police and we're fully staffed in fire for the first time in recent memory. They've brought on some new professionals, and I'm super happy about that. But I think I pretty much align on city issues with most people around here. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Fred, in Japan, for the most difficult question you could ask, because we don't know what we all feel, or what other people feel. I'm going to make an assumption here and go out on a limb about short-term rentals. I am pro-short-term rentals with less city involvement. Again, I'm only assuming that my constituents would disagree with me, but I don't think that the council should have made a decision to put this on the ballot. It's our property that we pay taxes on, and I don't think the city should be slowing down the process for us to be potentially supplementing our income and offsetting our costs in our property while providing a necessary service to people that we are hoping will come visit our town when we all use this service when we go anywhere except for Le Grand. Thank you.
In a previous question, I was referred to under levy. We heard a response a little bit ago about under levy, and I want to clarify. I'm still learning about the under levy. My biggest concern is I get the general idea that this is a way to move money around in order to get money in the general fund. What I'm really concerned about is that the under levy should be a one-time deal, not an annual event, and so I worry about the transparency.
So I just put it forward. We are moving on to our last question of the night before closing statements, and we will start with Denise. For the candidates who say, and this is a question from Max from Facebook, thank you, Max. For the candidates who say they will increase snow plowing, how will you pay for that specifically? How much would it cost and where would that money come from?
Okay, so I know that the city has a certain budget for snow removal, and that is a difficult question. I like to... I would like to research the possibility of privatizing probably our snow removal. Would it be cheaper? Would it be easier? Because some years, we have tons of snow, some years, we don't have any snow or barely any snow. So we got to see what we can do to do with our budget, because a lot of times, we are carrying the load, even if we don't have snow, we're still paying for it because there's a contract involved. And so I kind of would like to look into some different opportunities for that way. I also would like to have snow removal a lot less than six inches, especially around schools, maybe four inches, schools, hospitals, the main thoroughfares and so forth. I think that's something that we need to look at, and we just need to look on how we use those monies. Are we using it effectively or not effectively? And I think we kind of need to do that with basically all of our budgets. What would give us the big bang for our buck? What would benefit most of our citizens and so forth? I think there's a time for pet projects that we all like and we all feel strongly about, but I think we need to focus on the majority benefit of all of our citizens first.
Well, I'm going to get real granular here. Public works, like all city departments, operates largely on a fixed budget. With regard to snow removal, the department has $200,000 with which to cover all storm response events. That includes snow, ice, floods, debris removal, including gravel and traction materials. This money comes from a storm event fee of $8 on all of our water bills, $96 per year per meter. This department's general policy is to plow roads after six inches of snow has fallen. Plowing costs $30,000 per day for a full complement of nine vehicles, working a full 12-hour shift. City only has three motor graders, which are capable of plowing down to three inches or less. The five truck-mounted plows can't plow effectively or safely as low as three inches. So if the three graders go out after three inches of falling, that will cost about $15,000. Twelve events using all three units would eat through most of the budget with nothing left over for continued plowing through major storm events. Mandating plowing at three inches would, in a typical year, double the cost of plowing. It would eliminate the possibility of rollover dollars after a model... It would eliminate the possibility of rollover dollars after a mild winter, money which could be used for needed capital improvements. So Public Works could plow at three inches, but where's the extra money going to come from? What are you going to sacrifice in order to pay for that amenity? Thank you.
I'm not really sure how to answer this question because you're only supposed to answer it if you feel one type of way. I would like to talk again about, about the gravel that we're throwing down. I know Corinne said that they're not doing what they're doing, but they are, and I think we're all witness to it. There's, the policy states that they're supposed to plow, and as David said, at specific intervals, and then throw sand. Sand is different than 5/8-inch aggregate. That's what they build the road with, and it's what we're all driving around on. I've spent a lot of time, as a homeowner here, on the phone with Public Works complaining. I've spent six hours in front of my very own driveway, and my neighbors can attest to this, shoveling rock that they've thrown down. We watch them throw it every winter when we call them to complain that we can't drive up our hill. They drive by, they throw gravel, and about an hour later, they come and they push it all into my other neighbor's yard. You can see gray grass. There's not supposed to be gray grass. And when they're supposed to come pick it up, they can't pick it up. Again, if you ask Public Works, we don't have equipment. There's no vacuum truck that sucks up 5/8-inch rock. It sucks up sand. So if we're throwing rock, we need equipment that can pick up rock. Otherwise, we shouldn't throw it down. Thank you.
So snow removal's budget, $200,000 annually. It rolls over. If we don't use all of that money, it will roll over into the next year. So if you have a light year followed by a heavy year, you might be able to use some of that extra money. If you have a heavy year and then another heavy year, then you're in trouble. Something that we could look at is the Public Works Reserve Fund. That is set aside if a well goes down or something is damaged. We could do that, but I don't know if I would be comfortable with that level of risk. If it were at the end of the budget year, that might be less risk, but that's something that we would really need to look at to make sure that we don't have the roads plowed in a heavy year and then have a well go down and then not be able to provide water to the citizens. So it is something that we could look at, but it would, I would be cautious with that.
All right. This is one of those fun issues I will not win. We live in East Oregon. It snows. Yes, it does. The thing is about the plows. Yes, they can only go down to three inches. So every time everybody wants to come out sooner than the six inches, they're still only moving that three inches. So if we bring them out and we have four inches, they're moving an inch. Do you think it's valuable with our resources to pay the gentleman to go out to move an inch of snow? No. Like I said, unfortunately, I don't think I'll win on this one, so thank you.
It's kind of nice being last, what they said. I appreciate David's getting in granular, as he said, explaining the, what, the process and the costs. If we want more snow removal more often, it costs more money. That needs to be budgeted for. If that's the plan, then that, something has to be pulled out of the budget somewhere else. So I use the phrase, budget is a plan, a plan is a budget. If we want it, we're going to pay for it. The question is, what are we going to give up? Thank you.
Denise, it's you. Answered first, would you like a response?
Okay, 30 seconds, right?
Yes.
I think we need to have it as a safety issue. I mean, there's a lot of people who will not go out. It affects our businesses. Like I said before, it affects our doctors. We've got to look at it that way. If we need more money for plowing our roads or privatizing it, you know, by neighborhoods or however, I think we need to look at that. Because safety is an issue. Our senior citizens will not go out if the roads are bad. And that is hazardous to their health, as well as when they have doctor's appointments, which they sincerely need. I think we need to make sure that that is taken care of.
Before we get to these candidates' closing statements, we would like to give Molly two minutes to introduce herself. Molly is also running for city council. She currently is unopposed, so that is why she was not up here discussing issues, but we wanted to give her an opportunity to introduce herself and what she plans.
Hello. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Molly King, and I'm, like you said, I'm running for city council, position number five. A couple of reasons why I'm running for city council is that being steward of the tax-paying people's money is that I want to see it being used properly and effectively. Major concerns I've heard from numerous times is the condition of the streets, as well as everyone has mentioned here, and of course, snow removal. It's vitally important to hire the right people for the task at hand. We, as the city council members, need to support our local law enforcement, as well as our public safety, to make sure that they have what they need to be able to do their job. I'm a team player, but I'm a strategic thinker, but I'm not a pushover. I like to gather any facts before any critical decisions are made. I know I'll be that person on city council to put the best interest of all of the people of Le Grand first. Le Grand is our town, and it's also our future. Thank you.
Corinne, you are up first.
Thanks, everyone, for coming. So I'm just, I'm very committed to keep Le Grand a wonderful place to live. I've dedicated myself to service for the city for many years. I think you need to vote for knowledge and experience. And I really would like to thank Brent Clapp and the EOU for hosting this and the students. I think this was very well-run, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
I would like to first thank EOU Debates, Isaac Calvin and your teams, along with EO Alive. Brent, thank you for facilitating this forum. Thank you to all of the candidates for agreeing to be here this evening. Thank you to all of you who have attended and everyone who tuned in from home when you could be watching something far more entertaining. Thank you to my fiancee and our children for putting up with all of this and the extra demands that it's placed on you. I want to thank my campaign committee for all of your hard work in this process. For anyone who is still on the fence about who they should vote for, this November, I ask that you think long and hard about your decision and consider giving me your vote for city council, position seven, if you're looking for someone to truly represent you. Thank you.
So you really have some choices, and the choices are clear. You can choose experience over ideology. You can choose a candidate with clear, realistic goals and ideas on how to implement them. You can choose a candidate who thinks independently, not as part of a group. You can choose a candidate who's grounded in the community and who is concerned with multiple issues, not just roads and snow removal. I'm that candidate, and I plead and ask for your vote in the general election. Thank you.
I too like to thank everybody for this forum and for each and every one of you for taking time out of your evening to participate in this activity. I feel experience is important, but I also feel that somebody coming new and fresh, with fresh ideas, is also very important in this kind of a job. I also feel that somebody who's willing to learn and to listen is very important, and also someone who is willing to work with one another, which I've had much experience of doing that. There is something special of Le Grand. I love Le Grand. This is probably the best place I have ever lived in my life, and I want to keep it that special, in that anybody who comes to our town will want to come back again and realize how special this town really is. Yes, there's a lot to do, but we can do it together. That's what this is all about. I ask you for your vote. I appreciate this opportunity, and God bless you all.
I appreciate the opportunity to be part of this town hall and showcase who I am and what I have to offer as mayor of Le Grand. I bring a fresh perspective. I'm a new set of eyes, ears, ideas, and leadership skills. I have years of diverse leadership training, experience, and skills. I will maintain a public safety focus, work closely with our police department, our fire and emergency services. I'll advocate on your behalf, pardon me, on their behalf, to our legislators and state leaders and seek relief from the impact of ballot Measure 110 and other decisions that continue to have a direct negative impact on our community and our citizens. And I'll work closely with our council members to function as a respectful team, to make the best decisions possible for Le Grand. I appreciate your consideration and ask for your vote. Thank you.
I'll just leave it there. I'll just break it again. So I've got to be first, and I've got to be last. First off, I would like everyone that can stand up, please. Can everybody, please, give me a hand? Because this is not easy. This is a hard thing. I appreciate every one of you. Thank you. So I told my wife I wouldn't write anything. I'm just going to come up here and speak, and I'm going to tell you from my heart. I was a little boy, I worked for my uncle at his station, 10 years old. I used to carry a milk crate, you know, because I wasn't big enough to get up there and wash that window. Now I'm the owner, and I've worked hard to bring what it is. I was born and raised Le Grand. I love Le Grand. I am invested in Le Grand. I am not going nowhere. If you would please make me as your mayor, I will give you 110% as I did with my own business, and I will work hard for the citizens, for our police, for our fire, for our public works, for the water, the pool, I mean, water, the swimming pool. I will work hard for every part of our city. I want my son to grow up in the town that I grew in, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, this concludes our town hall event. Thank you to all the candidates for attending, and thank you to everyone in the audience and everyone who submitted questions. This couldn't have happened without you. Thank you to Eastern Oregon University for allowing us to use your space, and thank you to EOU Debates for hosting this event. I hope you all have a wonderful evening, and make sure to vote before November 8.